Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And it's September 16th of 2021. Welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll start off tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, first item tonight is the approval of the agenda. Sorry about little bullet issue there, new business, but we have two pieces of new business there. Clear that up.
So do you need a motion to approve?
Sure do.
I so moved.
No second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Hi Jim.
Aye.
Okay, public comment. We've got Krista, we've got you on the agenda, so that doesn't fall under this category. And we've got Gordon here, so I guess you wouldn't fall unless you came here to. Okay. Okay, so we'll move down to new business. And Krista, if you would come up, you can come up to this chair here. And this is Krista Thomas, I'll let you introduce yourself, but we're talking about some potential subdivision.
Yes.
Ideas for the Thomas Dairy. And so for the recording, for the record, if you would reintroduce yourself, sorry.
Yes. First of all, thank you for putting me on the agenda. And I am Krista Thomas and I'm part of the family that owns Orin Thomas &amp; Sons Incorporated here in Rutland Town. And the reason that I'm here is that we're in a liquidation phase. And I'm seeking accurate information so that I can contribute. I'm one of five owners, okay, so I want to be able to contribute in an intelligent manner as we figure out what to do with our land. So I'm actually here to educate myself and hopefully get some questions answered and gain some knowledge. Yeah, so you know, I'd like to do some good things with the land, whatever that might be, I think there's probably a lot of options. And we've been advised that if we create six or more lots in Rutland Town in a five-year period, or anywhere, I guess it's 10, anywhere in Rutland County, a land use permit under the Act 250 may be required. So can I, is that accurate? My the six or more.
Any development over an acre. Oh, it kicks in Act 250 in Rutland Town.
Commercial development, right?
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Okay.
So I believe your numbers are correct.
Okay, so the yeah.
Howard, do you, so for what?
I'm not sure on that, I'm really not sure on the numbers.
I believe it's nine. Can you do, can't you do nine residential lots without Act 250? Isn't that the?
You're probably right, Jerry.
I'm not sure, but I believe that it's actually nine.
Over about a five-year?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's over a period of time, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just going from memory and times that we've talked to people about it, so I'm not.
Question and issue that she's dealing with here is they did what we thought and what they thought was boundary line adjustments, two of them. Couple of years, I guess two of them, I think is what it was. And I remember, I remember very well, they came in and we presented, they presented it and we conducted it as if it was a, you know, a boundary line adjustment. They didn't go through the subdivision process of, you know, notifications in the paper and all that extra stuff and the extra passing whatnot, and that was a question that they had, I remember when Dick Thomas came in, he really wanted to make sure that it was a boundary line adjustment. Well, now I think with the new paperwork, the new forms that we have makes it look like it should have been a subdivision, but we didn't have paperwork that Bill, you know, those forms that Bill put together for us to show what's a boundary line adjustment and what's a subdivision. And so I've been a little hung up on were they subdivisions? But there was two parcels that they did, and what they did is they just adjusted the boundary, they didn't create a new site, a new building lot, they just moved the boundary and it wasn't a big deal. It wasn't a whole lot, it was just basically a minor, small adjustments. And now the question is are those being counted as subdivisions? Because that, that really could hurt them, and meanwhile, I think, I think the board that was sitting here really was under the assumption that these were boundary line adjustments. The appellant was, and now that's the question. What are they, what were they?
Ten in five years.
Ten in five years, and what are the numbers of lots?
I don't know how they have been done. I don't have to count right.
So what exactly, how indeed, what exactly is ten in five years?
Subdivisions in a five-year period.
Okay. Um. Why? If, if no new parcels were created, why is there any, why is there, why is there a question that this was a subdivision and not a boundary line adjustment?
I know you, you came in and talked to Bill, I don't know what you came away with.
They're listed. They're listed as subdivisions that were applied for.
Right, they're all, every application that we have for them is on, is on a subdivision application form.
Which may have been a mistake.
But did, but did we have a boundary line adjustment form back at that time though?
That's fine. Right, we created that.
We created, right, so the intent back then, real intent with everybody was that they were boundary line adjustments, but unfortunately, it's a, it's a paperwork that
Right.
that makes it look like it was a subdivision, and that, and that's
Do, does anyone, Bill, have you been able to go through the minutes back then to see what the, to see the intention written out somewhere?
No, I haven't had a proper
It's probably there, if we could get, if we could figure out the dates.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, then we'll figure out what to do with the paperwork.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's just terminology actually, because it's as if you just took a fence and moved it.
Yeah.
You know, no new lots were created, it was just squaring up a
And we just, we just went to the town attorney recently and asked for the distinction between the subdivision, boundary line adjustment, and that's definitely falls right into boundary line adjustments.
Yeah, so I guess I'm, I am still a little confused on the number of subdivisions we can do in Rutland Town. See, I think we can do five in Rutland Town, but no more than 10 in Rutland County if you don't want to trigger the Act 250. And for whatever reason, everybody tells me, stay away from Act 250, I don't know enough about it to be afraid of it. But so, so I'm thinking, well, if we've only really done a couple subdivisions, which I'm coming up with two. So right now, our, what we call our home farm, it's listed as one parcel, so why not you know, split off the buildings, because somebody might want to set up a little business there, they can't afford all the land. It's prohibitive. So that's why I'm trying to get an exact count on how many we have at the present time, and how many we can do. So.
Isn't it pretty important though, to keep in mind that if it's commercial development over one acre, Act 250 gets triggered anyway. My
Right.
Right, so if you, if you were to split up 1.1 acres, Act 250 is gonna, and it's commercial.
What if it's listed as commercial now, though? It's been a business.
But, but even if it's commercial now, still, if you, if you subdivide it, I might, and somebody can just correct me here if I'm wrong, if you subdivide an acre or more of commercial land and somebody develops it for that purpose, it's going to go be, you know, Act 250 is gonna be triggered, I believe.
So do you need, do you need commercial both before and after?
No, I think the question that Jerry is raising is that it doesn't matter, I mean, for example, right now, how much land is associated with the commercial property?
Is it, is it all commercial, well, I mean, I've got, I guess I have to look to see how we've got it classified, because most of the farms.
We've got it classified as working lands.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a little bit of just, well, just where the Nissan dealer used to be, is commercial. I think for most of your land, it's, it's pretty much everything north of East Creek is, is, we would prefer was ag or forestry. That said, we don't have zoning.
Even if it's commercial, say it was five acres.
Right, that was my
Divided it in half, and the farm was gonna stay in the farm on one piece.
Right.
And if someone was going to develop something else, a commercial venture on the other 2.5, Act 250 would be triggered.
That's right, that's what I was trying to explain, right.
That's, that's my understanding of it, thank you.
I have a similar understanding to you, Jerry. Don't cast your lot with me.
And it's because we don't have zoning that this one acre trigger goes into effect.
Right.
You, you might want to talk, I mean, there is a Rutland office for Act 250. And I can give you the name of the person there who runs that office. It might be able to answer some of these questions for you about the, what they have on their records for, you know, what, what has been developed. What has been subdivided.
But of course, that, that would also mean that if you were to take five acre chunk divided into two, 2.5, and you're not developing, you're just selling the land, Act 250 doesn't affect you.
Yeah.
It affects the developer.
Developer, yeah.
So the buyer.
So, you know, whoever.
The other thing that they have up there, there's four houses that are right along, right on Route 7.
Yeah.
Each one of those has its own parcel, it's, it's in the deeds here, the there's a deed and description of each parcel, so those parcels actually normally you would just sell those without going through subdivision or anything, because they're an existing parcel. And that's one of the things that I guess they're they gotta try to work in here, but they have, they do have four of those parcels that are all as far as I'm concerned, they're sellable, they're out there, they're in, they're in the deeds.
And you're talking about both sides of the highway, Krista?
It will be eventually.
We're, we're just talking about the east side now?
Are these the four parcels? Um, are these the four that are right?
Right, yeah, yeah, I think that's what you're looking at, yeah.
They're four relatively small parcels compared to the rest of the
Oh yes, yes.
But if they're separate parcels now, they don't, that, those can be conveyed, there's no, it doesn't matter, it doesn't count.
They're not included in that.
Right, right.
It's only if they are split up, so they can be sold off right now as they are. I'm triggering anything for the developer or the seller. It's if you're gonna split any of those or anything around it, that you're gonna trigger Act 250.
If it's commercial.
If it's commercial, right, yeah.
So, so that's fairly simple, the houses can be sold.
Yep, well, these, these whole, all, if these are the four lots, then they all can be sold.
Yeah.
You know, lock, stock and barrel without any issues.
Okay, yeah, that
That's not a boundary line adjustment, that's not a subdivision, that's nothing, that's just a sale of the existing lot.
Okay, so, so back to what I'm envisioning as what someone might want. Where our dairy was, where we processed milk, say there's five acres there, there's buildings and there's a garage, and I'm thinking somebody might want to set up a little business there, but not have to buy 170 acres. So is that, is that possible for us to sell that? And then you're saying the buyer could do the Act 250 per
Yeah.
Okay, so we can say this is for sale.
So you could, you could chunk off the farm, if I'm not wrong here, you could chunk that off with five acres, six acres, seven acres? And whoever buys it, if they intend to do commercial development, would be have to go through the Act 250.
Right. So you're um, Krista, you're talking about
then a bigger parcel and four small lots that are up here along Route 7, you're talking about the bigger parcel that's more of a rectangle that goes behind those?
No, no, actually, those little four parcels that you're referring to, Howard helped me figure this one out. The furthest north one is our office.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't make sense to sell it, that's not really a house. My thought would be that that would go with like the buildings, like a garage and and then coming this way, there's, there's, yeah, so, there's three houses.
Yeah.
But again, my opinion is the farmhouse should go with the business, because it essentially sits on top of it.
But that's a separate property.
It is.
Yeah.
It is, so it's just kind of an opinion.
So you down the two houses, two parcels?
There's two more, yes, there are two houses, keep going south.
The two, they're right, they're contiguous, they're not separated by anything in between, they're just, they're right next
That is correct, and there's yet another house, though, that is part of the big parcel, that's not its own self right now.
Sure, you're smart.
So.
Farm right there.
But so, so what I'm talking about, when I talk about the dairy, it's, it's the buildings right on 7 between that first one, which is the, the furthest north one, which is the office.
And the cycle.
Yes.
Right, but that's also part of a bigger parcel that goes all the way from Prospect Hill down to this yellow property here.
Yeah, it is part of a huge, it's, yeah.
So that's what you're talking about. That, if you were going to, if you are going to do anything, this is my impression, and I'm not the expert here, I'm just trying to inform myself. If you cut that up, that is a subdivision.
Yes, I would have guessed.
Because you're not changing, you're not changing any of the existing boundaries. You're actually cutting up that bigger parcel into whatever number you
You're splitting that off.
Correct.
Yes, that's, that's
So whatever you do there, that will trigger a subdivision.
Yes.
Uh, regulations.
But what I'm, what I'm thinking is someone might want a little business there, but they, they don't want all the land.
Right.
So if we have the opportunity to do a couple subdivisions, that's just my thought, maybe that's a logical place to start. So that's
And those would be on that north lot that, that they would go up to Blueberry Lane? That parcel or not?
Oh no, this would just be maybe five acres right there on 7, where the buildings are.
Because right here, there's, there is a boundary line probably less than a quarter of a mile of Prospect Hill, that goes all the way down, goes right here down to this yellow, yellow button, so that's, that's a rectangle. Then you have a bigger property over here, along with the ones that are along Prospect Hill, and those I think are not Thomas's properties, but I don't know that for a fact. Right, and so that's the one, and then there are two more parcels that go up to Blueberry Lane, I think that's Hathaway's.
Yeah.
That's close to there, I don't think that's yours, but, okay.
And a couple of solar panels.
Yes, yes.
But I think, I think Chris is talking about this rectangle property that goes between my pen and Prospect and then Route 7 here. And that's what I think she's talking about, potentially dividing up, but I don't
Or you're talking from the, the houses up, from the end of the I don't know where you're at, but you got to four houses right there now.
Yeah.
You're talking just from the north part of those houses that subdividing it or going
Just what we call the dairy, like
The dairy area, yeah, the dairy areas, you see it on this map here. Go up there far.
I think that's this, is that this?
I guess, but he's looking at it, he's looking at this. He's looking at.
Yeah, that includes
This is their current use map, you know, and this but, well, no, you know what this is, this is what's excluded, this line here
Yes, out of current use.
Excluded out of current use, this line doesn't mean anything as far as property, that's not a property line. It's just a boundary for property that's excluded.
And what are these over here?
That, that is
Now, on that map up there, there's a boundary line that actually goes like that.
And I, I say that, do they own? No, this is their property too, they actually, see all these numbers?
Yes.
They own all, all the way around this red line, that's their property, this red, red line is their entire farm.
Okay, but there's a, there's a, seems to be a boundary line up there that goes like along that.
Okay.
It goes, that cuts this, that's the rectangle line, because it's parallel. I don't know if that's accurate on that.
I wonder if it's this one.
Nope.
No?
No, it's this, you can, because this is Hathaway's over here. Blueberry Hill, like, wait a second, how far? Right over here.
Over like here.
It's further over, it's, it's, Hathaway's in here.
Because these are not yours, there's like Colon's and other folks who are
Yeah, this is Dick's. That's ours.
If we're looking at that map over there, there's a line here that is not shown on this map, and then there's another problem.
If she wanted, if they wanted to subdivide something, create some parcels, they could do it anyplace, and they could do it in, if they wanted to include these barns and things, they could break this up.
Absolutely.
In any which way.
But that's gonna be a subdivision. A subdivision.
Yes, yes, that seems logical, yeah.
Which is not too much, it's not a big deal. Going through the town.
You need a survey map.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so instead of people being afraid, oh, we can't subdivide, because we'll trigger, we're not even close to five. So, I don't believe, so
And it can be up to 10, didn't we resolve that?
10 in five years.
10 in five years.
Lots in five years.
But that's for housing, that's for residential, right?
That's Act 250. Act 250 says no more than 10 subdivisions in five years.
Is that all Rutland County, or just anybody?
Not specified.
Okay.
No more than 10 in five years. Hmm. Okay, maybe my information is outdated. Okay.
I mean, I don't, when was the last time a subdivision on that property occurred?
Well, no, Velco. On 29, Bill did help me with a list. On 2921, Velco applied for a sub, oh.
That's down on Post Road.
That's down the road, yeah.
That's not this parcel.
That's not, yeah.
But still, it's Rutland Town. I think it all, it's all
Okay, she's saying it's a subdivision in Rutland Town, is what she's saying, it's, it's in town, so that's one more subdivision.
So
So when you're talking about subdivisions of any property owner's land, no matter where it's located.
No matter where it's located.
Okay.
Best if you go talk to, go down to the office, not take anybody's anything to us.
For Act 250, and the, the person, the, the person there, her name is Kim Lutchko, L U T C H K O Or kim.lutchko@vermont.gov. So that's where any of your Act 250 questions should go. Or potential Act 250 questions.
Right. So when, when is a subdivision counted? When it's applied for, or when it's approved, or is that usually one in the same? When they get applied for, are they approved fairly quickly?
Um, you know, there's, there's an, it's usually 90 to 120 days, it depends on the survey. And it's, it's when it is approved that it's legal.
Because if you apply for it, it doesn't, if it's wrong, it's not gonna count it, so
Right.
Okay. Because that would be helpful to know when, when it's in the, say, five or 10 years. It's a time span there. Okay. So I guess to get the official count then, maybe I should talk to Kim. But I think, I think we're all in agreement, we're not even close to the five. We've done a couple, we've done the Velco one on Post Road, because they want to increase their substation, they're interested in that land, and then we built a solar farm on top of our hill. And that's it.
Did you convey rights for that land, for the solar farm? Did you sell that to the
LLC, so it had to be subdivided.
It's a separate parcel.
But was the Velco thing, was that a boundary line adjustment, or was that actually a subdivision?
We, we did, and we pointed the subdivision.
We did, okay.
Yeah, I think that was because they were putting in water sewer, was that the reason?
Right, yeah. Exactly.
So, okay, just a couple more quick questions, I don't need to take all your time. So we have land on both sides of Route 7, what, at what we call the home farm. And is Route 7 a natural subdivision so that we could sell the land on the west side of Route 7 as a separate parcel without needing to subdivide?
I would think they are separate parcels up there.
Yeah.
You have your parcel up of Sugarwood Hill, right? And it's bisectioned by, by Sugarwood Hill, it's one parcel.
I have seen that, and
Yeah, I, I would, I would definitely not assume the road is a natural barrier.
Wait a minute, everything on the Sugarwood is sold, and nothing
He's just using that as an example.
Example, there was, there was one parcel, I think, that was cut to three sections by Sugarwood Hill Road, and it was one parcel, so
I think you're
I would not assume that.
Yeah, I think the answer to your question is to look at a parcel map and look at the numbers. And if they change, it's a different parcel. If they don't change.
If you want to do the subdivision, then make that a parcel during that subdivision, that way it's part of one large one. Rather than doing, well, we'll do this one, then you're gonna come back and we gotta do it because our process will over again. And right, if we, if, if they say, okay, here's 100 acres, we're gonna make five 20-acre parcels, rather than we're gonna do one now, we'll do one later, then you're doing five different ones versus one for five parcels. Do it all at once and
So it's not the number of parcels, it's the number of applications.
Right, it's, it's the number of times you go through the process.
So if you want to take one huge, 300 acre lot, divided into, like Bill said, 20 different or 30 different parcels, that's only one, that's one subdivision.
It's the sublots.
I don't, I don't think that that's actually
I don't either.
the case, I think it's the 10 10 parcels resulting from the subdivisions. But again, you should ask Act 250.
That's not ours.
Okay, so to answer my question, as far as what's on the west side of Route 7, though, I need to look at the parcel numbers, and is that on my tax bill?
You want to look at a parcel map.
A parcel map.
They're on the website.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, if the number changes, then it's a separate parcel. If the number doesn't change across the street, then it's, it's the same one.
It'll be a little line that
Yep. And sometimes they change and sometimes they don't.
The other question would be, is it
Well, no, sometimes there's going to be two different numbers, one on each side of the road, and sometimes there won't be.
Okay.
So I mean, that's what I've seen in my
Okay. Okay, my third question was the houses, which you've already answered, they're separate entities, they don't need to be subdivided, we have deeds. Yeah, I think I'm good, thank you.
And you're thinking about putting three or four of those on the market?
It would, I think two could, you know, it's up to the group, it's really not up to me. You know, we have to discuss the whole water and sewer. But everybody's been hesitant to do it, because of subdivisions, but they're not, it's not required. So I can at least assure them that, you know, people need homes, let's sell them.
Yeah, and there's no water sewer even to your business up there, is there?
No.
Yes.
No, but
Either side of them.
Each Each one needs its own separate, you know, needs to be a separate entity to sell it, so
Doesn't it? But it's one of the
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Sure. Hopefully we answered some of the, anything else that's on your list?
That was my list. Wasn't that enough? Well, yeah. I'm gonna stay and listen and learn, though, because this is interesting.
Come back anytime, and, you know, if you want to give us updates as you progress, that would be great too.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Everything on the other side, the west side?
It's all part of the one on the east side.
It's all combined.
Oh, it's, it's part of the east side?
It's part of the east side, you can see it up there, there's no, there's no change. It goes right across the road.
This means it's, it's
Both sides, yeah.
The west of Route 7 is part of
It's part of the other one. There's no number over there either.
No.
Well, that's why.
There's the Cedar Dale. There's the Cedar Dale.
Not sure if that west side has a separate description, you know, around that piece or not, or if it, description goes around the whole farm or whatever, but those are things you're going to have to look into.
So I'm curious, Bill, about our land use map, which shows the, um, the east side of Route 7, having a rectangular box that, uh, goes from, uh, is that Prospect Hill up on the north there?
Mm-hmm.
Down? And that's not true on the ma, on the parcel map that you have there.
That map and data this map are probably two different things, so.
That's back to like, um, 2016, I think?
This is 2020. So if the parcels, if the parcels changed, then that may have also.
I see, okay.
It's weird though.
Doubt that anything.
It is weird, because I don't remember anything changing on that parcel.
No, I don't think so. I don't.
So, I mean.
I mean, they, they could have just honed the parcel data and, you know, got things a little more accurate in this latest version that we're, Bill's projecting here.
So Bill, how big is the lot that has the small, like the office on it? I can't read it from here.
It's all, it's 178.06 acres.
Oh, but see the, see the smallest lot to the north?
Yep.
That's what the office is.
It's got to be like a quarter of it?
1.62.
See, that 1.62, and I'm, I'm just saying this, that would not trigger Act 250, but could still be commercial, probably, if you talk to somebody that knows all those rules.
Right.
So Act 250 is so important for you to talk to because you could potentially convey that and it would be not be scrutinized through Act 250, which might be good for somebody to have one, use that office as an office. So you've got, you've got options there, you've got to.
Because it's less than an acre.
Because it's less than an acre, so you've got options, you've got to talk to somebody that has their stuff together.
And you can start with Kim before you have to go to the, the legal side. And there's, there's experts out there on that. Okay. Let's move along now. Um, we've got some personnel policies that Bill sent out with the packet.
No, it's not called a packet, the, 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 um, rules of procedure.
Rules of procedure, yes. So we've got two different things here.
Yeah, meeting.
We've got, um, some personnel policies that the select board have passed for everyone who works for the town, which includes us. And so there's no discussion involved there. That's a done deal, so just signatures are needed from everyone here?
Everyone on the commission, yeah.
Okay, what is, what we can look at are the rules of procedure that Bill did send out in the packet. And some of this, we were talking about some of this stuff, the, the last meeting, about who votes and, and all that sort of thing. But, um, is it, everyone had a chance to look at this, or does everyone at least have a copy?
So where are we on the agenda? What, what's happening with the stormwater commission or nothing?
There's a bullet out of place, so we're still in new business.
That model rules of procedure.
Sorry, I got here two minutes late, but.
So. Purpose, that's pretty, we'll just, let's just go through this. And Bill did highlight some, some sections that we probably definitely want to look at and make a decision on. Um, and then if there's anything else in here in the body of this. Uh, the purpose is pretty self-explanatory, the application to, to who this applies. And Dana?
I'm just lost in the agenda, where on the agenda are we?
There's just, there was a bullet error here.
Oh, this, okay. Sorry. Graph model rules and procedures, okay. Thanks.
Okay, so C, organization. Uh, the first one is something we haven't done. Annually elect a chair and vice chair, we haven't been doing that annually. Um, it is required at the select board to do it annually after town meeting. There is nothing in statute that requires this, but if everybody wants to include this provision. Who wrote this, Bill? So there's that, uh, number two.
Just, yeah. So would that, that be, would annually be the calendar year or?
I don't know, because it's, 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 it's really laid out specifically for the select board. It's like the next meeting after town meeting.
Oh, okay.
They reelect their officers.
Do it, and that becomes the date every year.
Do the first meeting of every calendar year.
Right, January. Yeah. Yep.
Easiest.
It doesn't specify, so use the option two.
Right. Oh, C1. First meeting in each calendar year.
Yep.
We haven't done this like five or six years.
Thought we did it a little while ago, no?
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
I think it's, I think it went all the way back to Andy stepping down, and I think we've done it since then.
Pardon?
I think it goes back to when you stepped down as chair. I think we've done an election since then, we did one then.
Thought we did one, one other time.
I got drafted at one point.
Nobody stepped up, so.
So they get, I got drafted, yep.
Does that count?
Maybe.
So C, organization two, the chair shall preserve order and regulate its proceedings. Uh, three, majority members shall constitute a quorum. No meeting will take place if there's not a majority. And Jim, feel free to pipe in anytime you have any comments. Um, number four.
Can I just stop on number three for a question? It says no meeting shall take place. Does that mean we just stop and go home? Or does that mean that the, there's no, there are no decisions made?
No actions can be taken.
No actions taken.
Yeah.
More quorum, more meeting.
Yeah, essentially no official meeting will take place.
Okay, so no minutes or anything like that?
Well, so the, when the select board has committee meetings, if there's two of them, it's not, they can't make decisions, they can make recommendations to the full board, but if three of them show up, they can make decisions. So if they have two, if they have two of them, they can still hold a, like, informational meeting, just no action can be taken.
Right.
But you can make the decision, you say like, there's no meeting, because that can be, that can be the decision, is there's no meeting, because there's no quorum. But there could be minutes, there could be, because there's informational stuff, it can't be decided.
Do we want to change any of the language here? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty standard operating procedure. Okay, no, uh, number four, no single member shall have authority to represent or act on behalf of the body unless by majority vote. The body has delegated such authority and such delegation is recorded in the meeting minutes. Okay?
Um, I've got, I've got a question about the, uh, constituting a quorum. We have, um, seven permanent members and two alternates. I don't think this document addresses the status of alternates.
Add that, you add like primary and secondary members, you can, you can add that language if you want to.
No, I realize, but it's currently not, it, as I read this, it, there was no indication of the roles of permanent members versus alternates.
Right.
And so.
I think Harv's point, she had said this is more geared toward like a select board.
Right.
And that's, that doesn't apply, that's not, so you can certainly add that, so that way it's, it's spelled out, no, there's no question.
Otherwise, we're operating under ambiguous rules if we.
I guess, I mean, the quorum is, is always four. And it's, it's, you know, it's four of, you know, either the permanent members or the alternates if needed.
Right.
So if, um, if you want to work up some language to make that more specific, then I guess we can, um.
I'm just, I'm just raising the question. That, that's all. If nobody thinks that that's necessary, I'm not going to spend time working.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
Quorum, the quorum.
Okay. Number five, motions made by members of the body do or do not require a second. Why is there even the option of do not?
I think they should require a second.
Absolutely. The chair of the body may make motions and may vote on all questions before the body. I think you had that question, that specific question last time, Dana.
Well, I did, because it's a, that's a Roberts rules, um, provision. So if we're not following Roberts rules, it doesn't matter, but that's why I asked.
There's an alternate though in Roberts rules for that, isn't there? That you can do it one way or the other?
There is, there's an option.
Chair can either, can either participate as a regular member or.
If, if the body allows the chair to participate, there actually has to be a vote taken for the chair.
We never have done that.
We've never done that.
No. So we really should clean that.
The way I read it is any, it's small bodies, I, I didn't think there was that requirement. I think for larger bodies, you have to do that vote, but for bodies 12 and under, the chair is in a different position.
Right.
It's not as.
I think Andy was referencing my address of Roberts rules, and he said that under Roberts rules, the chair can be enabled to vote. And I said, I think he's right, but that it requires a vote of the membership to allow the chair to participate in that way.
We can decide on it.
Every vote?
Normally the chair does only vote to make or break a tie, under Roberts rules.
That's larger groups.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying under Roberts rules, which applies.
That's larger groups, you, we go back to Roberts rules and look up small groups, 12 and under.
What is it, a small group is under 12?
12 and under, I think.
Really?
I mean, you look at the select board, the chair votes and makes motions regularly, I mean, and every time. Sherman?
If this, these are going to be our rules of procedures, do we have to discuss Roberts rules? Are we following what's here?
No.
Because.
We're setting up our own set.
Okay.
So where do we want to, what are we going to do with five?
Do we require a second? You're going to say that, right?
Yeah.
I think it, so I'm confused by, so a motion will only pass if it receives the votes of a majority of the total membership of the body? So does that mean if we only have four people? That just seems strange to me.
It, that, that's, that's state, there was a Supreme Court ruling on that. Um, to pass anything, we always have to have a majority of the total body, four votes.
Okay, so we need to have, um, so the four is not a quorum, that's the number of.
Well, four would be a quorum, if there are only four people, then you need a unanimous vote in order for that to pass.
Okay, I didn't.
Right.
I didn't know that either.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, that's what this is saying.
Yeah.
And that was confirmed by some, some court ruling two years back. I have a copy of somewhere.
Number is older.
But they can follow Rob, General Roberts rules, there's no. Yep.
We can do whatever we want. I mean, if you want to follow Roberts rules, we can do that, if you want to use these or something like this.
Right.
Okay, I guess we're done with five?
Well, is, yeah. So the chair of the body may make motions and may vote on all questions. Everybody in the room, right? Okay.
Number six, there's no limit to the number of times a member of the body may speak to a question. A member may speak or make a motion only after or without being recognized by the chair. I would prefer only after.
Yep.
Motions to close or limit debate will or will not be entertained.
After, so.
Yeah.
Speak or make a motion only after they're recognized by you?
Yes. Yeah, just.
That's not how we do it, is it?
That's not how we do it, that's not on the board as either.
You know, I think there's, there's, isn't there times where we'll be sitting and we'll be ready to adjourn and somebody will just say, I'm going to adjourn, and you haven't recognized them?
That's me.
So if you want to approve the minutes, you can't, you can't make a motion for the minutes without her recognizing you're going to do so.
Right.
I guess, yeah, I guess I'm confused about what recognizing is.
You recognize to make a motion.
Which you do quite often, but not always.
Right.
Do we, do we continue the way we have been?
Kind of loose.
And it's, you know, the second, second point there.
But I'm saying, I think the way we've done it is, but there's no, you don't have to recognize.
You don't have to, yeah, for the sake of order, it's good. Okay, so we'll, we'll do without.
People usually raise their hand for the chair to recognize them to speak. But in terms.
Especially with motions.
Okay, well, no, no, no. I'm, I'm separating, normally if we're having a, a discussion, people will raise their hand or ask to be recognized to speak.
I never read my hand, I just blurt it out, so I mean, I'm.
But with respect to, with respect to motions, that's true.
In the Jerry clause here.
Especially you have to be a.
I just, I, you know, look at you, I mean, they're, they're, they are fairly simple, I don't want to make it more restrictive. Because then if we, I don't, I, like, you know, think about it, we don't want to get bogged down in the procedural.
Right.
Because if you make a motion to approve the minutes, they didn't were recognized.
Right.
So I agree.
Okay.
I thought about that question, so.
Okay, so we'll go with that, go with, without.
Okay.
And that one. And motions to close or limit debate will or will not be entertained. Um.
I go for will.
Mm-hmm.
I like that.
I think you've used that in the past, haven't you?
Somewhat, yes. It does have a place. Hopefully.
Um, seven, anyone can request a roll call vote. And meaning electronically, one is required if it's not unanimous.
Yeah.
Eight, meetings may be recessed to a time and place certain, we're going to need to use that this evening to get into the conservation commission. Nine, these rules may be amended by unanimous or two-thirds majority vote of the body and must be readopted annually. Uh, what's your, what's your brother's there? Unanimous or two-thirds to approve these? Oh, majority, okay, unanimous, two-thirds or a simple majority?
Simple majority is four. Uh, a two-thirds majority is five. Just.
Simple majority. What's that? The simple majority?
Isn't that how we would have done it, have we not read these?
Probably. Yeah, I think simple.
Probably.
So you're going with majority?
Yeah. The agendas. Okay, this first one. Yes, we have agendas, do we want time allotted for each item of business to be considered by the body? I've seen it done and I, it never, never works.
Hardly ever works.
Um, those who.
Is that part of the sentence?
Yeah.
I think so. And, you know, the other one, the, the other part of this is pretty standard operating procedure two, you know, contact the chair to be included on the agenda. And the chair is responsible for the final content. And then two is pretty much, um, open meeting law.
Right.
So can't do too much there. And three, changing the order of business on the agenda. Unanimous, two-thirds or a majority? Or just simple consent, just consent. consent to the body. I don't know, I mean. I, I'm not quite sure why this is strict as it is.
Why don't we just have majority on that? We're going, we change agenda all the time and it's really just.
Yeah, usually just ask for consent, but if we want to do a vote.
Exactly.
Well, actually, don't, no, don't we take, um, a motion to approve the agenda? We do have a motion to approve the agenda and so all this is doing is a, a motion to, uh, adjust the agenda. So if there's a motion to approve the agenda and, and something needs to change, then that's happened during the discussion. And I think it's simple majority, but I don't, I have never been at a meeting where we haven't had consensus. So, I mean, it's always been unanimous, I believe. Well, so I mean.
I would think a majority would just be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Stay consistent. We don't have to look up what is two-thirds and what's majority and, yeah.
That's four and five, Mary Beth, that's, that's the difference. But I think it is, you're right, it's simple, just have it be the same.
Okay. Let's remember all these.
That's Bill's desk.
When we're done, I'll, I'll send out another copy of it all.
Okay, meetings. One's pretty standard. Um, two is open meeting law.
Can I make a, just an observation? If we change when we want to meet. We will have to amend these. Every time.
And approve it.
And approve it. So, for example. Just in the future, if we adopt this with number one. Then if we decide that we're going to do six o'clock or seven o'clock on a regular basis. Then it would require a change to these rules. Just so that I'm clear. Now, if we're going to change it. Now, that's a good question. I don't know the answer. If we want to change it for a single meeting. Do we have to change this or can we just have a vote to change it?
It says regular meetings.
Why don't we reword number one so that?
Also.
Just say exactly where you're going.
Yeah.
So they're just regularly warned. All meetings need to be legally warned?
I, I think that that's, I think I would prefer something that does not specify the exact time. Because then we don't have to go and, and change it every time we would need to make an adjustment. So I, I think.
We have to say any more than that, really, that just all meetings need to be legally warned.
Right.
And a schedule will be posted or something like that.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Warned and posted.
Maybe the firehouse also with the place, yeah.
And then all we need to do at a meeting is to, uh, to, um, a, adjust or, um, change those meetings. There'd be special meetings at that point in time, which we tend to do occasionally. So.
Maybe just take that whole number one out.
No, I think that Andy's point is that it, they should be annually. Maybe that could also happen at the first, uh, at, at the first meeting of the year. Annually, the meeting schedule will be set because that's what we do. We agree. We, we do that already. So annually, the, uh, meeting schedule for the year will be set with regular meeting times and posted wherever.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Oh, it is. I, I mean, we just recently made an adjustment. We changed the meeting date too. I just wanted to keep it simple, but yet.
Right.
Yet make it work. I mean, if, if a warning is posted in, in the proper advanced time. Uh, and the time has to be changed at a different time. You know, what's? And just to keep it simple.
Right.
The warning is what really drives that.
It does, but you don't want your, um, you don't want your rules to be stating one thing and then saying that if you're going to change things within these rules, it requires, you know, a majority vote to change them. We would be changing this with some degree of frequency and I'm trying to avoid that.
We put something in to say that if so, that the warning would would describe it as to if it's something different, so we don't.
So the agenda would be set at the annual meeting, whatever that is, and then special meetings will be warned accordingly.
Well, that's statutory, so we don't even have to, you don't have to, right, that's in statute.
It's number two also.
Yeah, special meeting is right there.
So then why, so then couldn't a me, a meeting then would be, if we changed it, it could be a special meeting or that doesn't make sense either?
Yeah.
No, I mean, sometimes we do it if, if someone requested it because of a.
Right, right.
Trying to finalize a deal on land.
Requests for change in the schedule, we handle on a case by case basis.
Right, any, any modification to number one, any modification to the established calendar for the year would be handled, uh, on, basically as a special meeting.
Okay.
And see number two.
Okay, so we're good with two as well?
How, how do you, how do you want to word number one? Do you want, you want to write something and send it to me or do you want to figure it out now or? So I'm trying to make those two and I'll make sure I get it all right.
Hey, look at me, Bill.
Absolutely.
I, I tell you what. I, I will throw some language together, send it to you and everybody else. So that, that way there's no misunderstanding and we can, we can discuss it next time. And if I make any typos or if I screw it up, Andy and Jerry can hold me accountable. What's that?
Well, Norm fix it.
We missed our opportunity.
No, Norm will go over it with me many times if I screw up, so.
Okay, number two. It's statutory. Number three. Is statutory. Number four. Now, what's different about this?
It's the electronic part.
Right.
So there's a couple of stipulations. Where now, a meeting is fine electronically as long as a person is in this room to have the meeting run. And if there's not a unanimous vote, it requires a roll call. That's in the statute, that, that's we can't.
Right, right. And we already said that.
Whereas before.
Yeah, it was, it was addressed earlier, but it's, it's retweeted as part of, part of that, yeah.
And before Bill, someone did not have to be here, that's the change.
Before you could do it electronically.
Right, unless, okay.
You had to be here.
Oh, I see. No, you couldn't do it like.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so now they're, they, they, it's a little easier. So early on, early last year, we'd have Josh here or Mary here and that was it. They were the only ones, they were the only ones here. Everybody else was.
Virtual.
Were not here, which was fun, like they, they allowed that. So now it's just part of the normal rules.
And, and it's going to stay as.
Oh, I'm sure it's going to stay.
Yeah.
I don't see it ever going away. It's, it's easier, so I don't.
Yeah, yeah. For members and the public.
Yeah, so those, those are the two bigger changes. But so if there's any, if there's not a unanimous vote, you have to do a roll call, which we usually do anyway. We usually.
Yeah. Just because you can't always hear the people, you know, especially if they're calling in by phone and.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, F, public participation. Now, this is kind of interesting. Um, not the first one so much. I mean, all meetings are open to the public. And members of the public shall be afforded reasonable opportunity to express opinions. Um, number two. At the beginning of, end of, conclusion of discussion of, is, is that a fourth one?
No, I think it's at the beginning of, the end of. Conclusion of discussion of, that's all one phrase, conclusion of discussion of. So in other words. Um, you're talking about whenever the discussion on a topic is concluded on an agenda item.
Each agenda item, but before any action is taken by the body at each meeting. There will be a number, a certain number of minutes afforded for open public comment on each agenda item. By unanimous, two-thirds, a majority vote, the body may increase the time for open public comment in its place on the agenda. So this thinking about this, this, this is pretty standard operating procedure. We have that public comment period.
Yep.
Um, but usually the people that talk then are not talking about specific items on the agenda.
Right.
Which this addresses.
So we'd be going with beginning of then.
Well, there are two different things. We have a public comment period at the beginning of every meeting. This is talking about every agenda item.
I, I understand that and I still think that it should be at the beginning of the agenda item, certainly not at the conclusion. Because if we do it at the conclusion of the discussion, it's just going to restart the discussion open again. Anyone that's going to comment on a particular agenda item should will know what that item is and, and give us their views ahead of time. You know, potentially to influence what is going to be how it's, how you're going to deliberate.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense and it's not exactly how the Select Board does it, right? I mean, they ask for public comment first.
That's like, yeah, is there any public comment?
Oh, no, no, they, they, they talk amongst themselves first and then go to the public.
There's, there's a difference between the intent at the beginning of a meeting for public comment, because that public comment can be of any nature. The intent of this line is to be able to comment on the the topic and then the question is is a person going to be informed before the topic is discussed or after the topic is discussed? So I think that that's, that's, that's the critical difference in terms of affording an opportunity.
When I, when I read this, it seemed fairly restrictive. And, and you know, and whichever way you wanted to go with it, it was fairly restrictive. I was thinking like opportunity will be afforded to the public to comment on agenda items as needed, like why is it, I, I don't know why it needed to be so precise. But like certain number of minutes and you have, you have to go to agree, go extend the minutes, it's, it's a, it's a very restrictive clause, but.
I, I, I think that, I think the purpose behind that is so that something just doesn't drag on and on. And I think that that's the, that is Andy's point. That the, and that's the limitation of, you know, discussion earlier and here, but you want to have, afford the public an opportunity to weigh in and perhaps influence the opinion of the deliberators.
Right.
But you don't want it to drag on indefinitely. But the Chair can end that at almost any time.
And, yeah. I think that's what normally happens, that we're, we're, happens on a frequent basis. The Chair asks, it concludes, asks for the discussion to conclude and and that they've heard it. And that's, they've heard from every, the, the Chair usually asks, is everyone who wants to comment on this, have they spoken? And, and they just go around, you know, once, everyone that wants to speak and then you usually don't go around again.
Right.
And so that's why you would want to limit it to a, a, a concrete number of, if you're going to say at the end, then each person has one minute, two minutes. I wouldn't say more than that because otherwise you're getting into Andy's.
I've had a number of contentious meetings, it's something else here and, uh, trust me. You want to do it in advance.
Okay.
Literally. And, and anything else just leads to they can tell how after the discussion how we're going to vote is, is almost obvious to everyone.
Based on the comments.
Exactly. And then, it, it just going to lead into arguments. I hope, hopefully it never will here, but, yeah.
Yeah. Is one or two minutes enough, though? People, per person?
You have to extend it if you want to, so.
Is that?
Yeah.
So we want to, how about something like two minutes?
And I think, are we, are we doing beginning? Or end, or what are we doing? Are we doing at the beginning? As Andy is suggesting, or?
Right, we did have.
This is public, I'm sorry.
This is public comment on, well, for example, what's tonight's agenda?
Want to give an item? Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, so on this, our draft rules. So we have Krista here. She, she can comment. Right. There's no room right now, she can talk as long as she wants until it was bothered.
I, I don't think the, I'm not sure the beginning makes much sense. Um, unless they came here with the purpose of speaking to something, but I, I think most people come and listen to the flow of the conversation first. And then.
Doesn't that kind of go right to Andy's point, is that if you, they listen to the flow and they kind of know how we're going to vote and doesn't, or, you know, or they get a good idea about where it's going to go. Then doesn't that allow for the discussion to periodically get a little bit ugly? Like I have seen that a couple of times here before, where people tend to get pretty upbeat about where they know we're headed with it. In fact, you know where that happened? It was pretty bad. Howard, you must remember where the, the woman wanted the shed. I won't get into all that, she wanted to, there was somebody built a shed almost on her property. Remember that? Oh my God, did she get upset. But she kind of knew where we were going and then she called every one of us. The next day, she called me and screamed at me, but she, she jumped when she got an opportunity to speak at the end of that discussion. She went for a while and she was not happy. So, because she knew and she pointed out individuals. I mean, she was after me, she was after somebody else because we, our hands were tied, nothing we could do. You know, there's no zoning.
Right, there was a setback.
So that was the whole thing. So it was all about a thing where there was no setback rules. Somebody did that close to her property, she was upset about it.
Yeah.
So that was just an example of when you kind of knew where we were going and she meant it, individual people where she knew where they were going.
Is that what you were going to say, Sherman?
No, it wasn't. I agree with him, but, but, no, it wasn't. But I, I agree that it, I, I think it should be at the beginning. But my, my question was, don't we normally allocate a number of minutes per person? This implies a total number of, total time, doesn't it? Am I misreading it? There may be a number.
We probably should add per person.
Per person, yeah, that's what I was going to say before, yeah.
And are we okay with beginning? Do we have a consensus there?
Yeah, I think so.
Meanwhile, certainly at our, at our meeting the first of the year, if there's a situation where it should have been changed, we could change it.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. See how it goes for.
Okay, and we want to try two minutes, see?
Sure, twos. Two per person?
Two per person.
Bill will have a stopwatch right up there.
And by unanimous, two-thirds or majority vote. We may increase the time for open public comment.
We gotta stick with majority all the way.
That seems fair.
Yeah, I think majority is fine for that.
I agree.
I don't think there's anything controversial in the rest of these three. Comment by the public or members of the body must be addressed to the Chair of the body as a whole and not to any individual member of the body or public. Definitely want to leave that in there. Number four, members of the public must be acknowledged by the Chair before speaking. Hopefully that happens. Five, if a member of the public has already spoken on a topic, he or she may not be recognized again until others have first been given the opportunity to comment.
So, so does that mean if someone gets their two minutes at the end, they can get another two minutes?
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's the way, is that what we want?
Board may increase the time.
We have, after that vote.
Right.
Right, right. As long as everybody else has their opportunity and you all agree, then you can get the time. By the way, they don't get that accepted.
So we all have to by majority agree to give them more time?
Yes.
Right.
The only thing we can do, like, have these, have the public participation section available, like, I think it's in a sheet out there, but like, we can have it out there so they will know coming in, like, what, what that is, so.
Right, and, and then I could get the list too and just go down that list.
Yep.
So, so I, I'm sorry, I'm, I may be, maybe I'm missing this. If a member of the public has already spoken on a topic, he or she may not be recognized again until others have first been given the opportunity to comment. So my question is, if there are four people here and we're discussing something, all four get their turn. Does the first one have an opportunity to speak again? Because I read this to say it does.
That's the way I read it too, and I was reading the same thing up, Sherman.
I'm not sure it's needed since we already.
I'm not sure it is either, but it could just keep going round robin. I mean, but according to this, if that number one raises his hand after four is speaking, has spoken. if that number one raises his hand after four is speaking, has spoken, pardon me, then it just then it re just starts it starts again, and it.
Well, I think that we have captured that, because each person has two minutes to speak. It doesn't say that they can speak again for another two minutes. It says that there's a limit, because otherwise you're you're limiting the total amount of time to speak and comment on a particular item. And say that's five minutes. So each person can speak, but we're not gonna extend the the public comment time beyond five minutes unless we choose to do so. By what Barbara has suggested, we are now putting in two minutes per person on a topic. So if they haven't used two minutes, perhaps they can speak again. But other people have to have an opportunity. But if they've used their two minutes, they're done, according to the rules that we've put in.
I don't quite take it that way, but okay.
It can be interpreted.
I understand why you.
It can be interpreted the other way, unless you say it like that.
And it also can be interpreted, we don't need this.
Yeah, I don't think we really need it either.
Because if they use their limit or not, I mean, I don't think we want to be clocking these people all the time. You know, we'll kind of know when the two minutes is up, but I don't think we want to like, keep track, oh, that was only forty five seconds, so they get another.
I I was being somewhat, I was being somewhat facetious. So I will retract my comment.
So what the mask hid the.
Yeah, my smile, yeah. I was smiling internally. But I think you're right, you can remove five.
But on the other hand, we the the chair should have the authority to say, you've spoken already, we we want to continue with this. I mean, at some point, there's a there's a limit to what people can say. I mean, I've sat here where people said the same thing over and over, and we sat here and listened to them. So it would be nice if we didn't have things like that.
Right.
Yeah, I I think that's implied with two, that the chair would be able to do that, they've used up their limit.
Okay.
I'm not sure we have to put it in writing.
So we're gonna get rid of five? Is that we decided we don't need five? Is that what I heard?
I think five is can just stay in there the way it is, and just, we really shouldn't. If they're gonna go around a second time, every checkbody should have spoken the first time before that person that before number one speaks again.
I think for the most most part, it's not gonna be a problem. But if we have, like we did with the stormwater ordinance hearing, where we are anticipating a group, maybe at the beginning, it's a, and as a reminder to our rules, every person will get two minutes. At the end of two minutes, if you want to be recognized again, we will see the time remaining for the discussion. And if we can fit it in the schedule or something along those lines, and that you retain control over public discussion.
Right.
Yeah, like. Get two minutes.
Yeah, maybe we need, I don't think there's anything in here about public hearings, per se. And yeah, maybe we.
It's just part of the discussion. I mean, but that's, that would be an agenda item, which this talks about, so.
Yeah, the other thing was the land use map, when we rolled that out and we had a full room. And that went on for a while, and people, some people spoke multiple times. But that was one of the longer meetings that I've attended as a.
If if in that case, if we're anticipating a group, we can make sure we have the the public participation rules put out there even ahead of time with the meeting warning.
Right.
And as being a meeting reminder, like, every person will be allowed, will be afforded two minutes. Please respect your time limit, as everybody else gets a chance to speak, and don't even give the option for more more time if you don't want to, so.
Right.
Yeah, I I think I think number five is, it's good just to leave it in there for etiquette.
I think it's good to leave it in there for public hearings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Six, order and decorum shall be observed by all persons present at present at the meeting. No delays or interruptions, peace. Interrupted. Members of the body and public are prohibited from making personal and pertinent, threatening or profane remarks.
I think we're good on that, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just keep that one in. Um, seven members of the body, members of the public shall obey the orders of the chair or other presiding member. The chair should adhere to the following process to restore order and decorum of meeting, but may bypass any or all steps when he or she determines in his or her sole discretion that deviation from the process is warranted.
Take control, whatever it takes.
Uh, yeah.
Bring in a hammer.
Declare recess or table during the meeting till a time and date certain. Okay, yes, you're willing to give the chair those powers.
I I like number, I like D.
Yep.
Well, we do have a police department next door.
So this person builds the constable. I said builds the constable.
Builds a constable, okay.
Okay, so I will revise these with Dana's language for E one. And we'll make them available for the next meeting.
Okay, and we do have the personnel policies here from the Select Board. That there's, you know, enough for all of us here.
Is this an annual thing?
You want us to sign?
It's a it's a as, this, the last time was revised. There was there was a pending discussion about who was going to apply to, and they never followed up. I finally got them to follow up. And they said, anybody that gets a paycheck from the town, or qualifies for paycheck from the town.
Signs it.
Signs it, so.
We did sign this once before, though, if I remember correctly.
You may have, but we're.
A couple years ago, we signed.
Yeah.
We're just like, everybody gonna get a brand new.
Okay.
So there's a copy of the new policies, and then it's the signature page for.
You get the policy, I get the signature page.
And can we do this? Can we, when do you need to turn it in? Next meeting, fine, okay.
They're right here in this corner.
I'll grab mine.
Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to recess the Planning Commission so that we can convene the Stormwater Commission.
I also move.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned as the Planning Commission. Um, I think we need a motion to convene as a Stormwater Commission. Let's just do it anyway.
Go move.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of convening the Stormwater Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, um, without getting into a lot of details, um, there has been a complaint filed um, concerning a property in town in the Moon Brook watershed. It's not in the buffer area, but it's in the watershed. So what I did with that complaint was to get some state officials in to look at the situation and see if any permits were needed or had been violated or anything like that. So that's that's been done. Um, a couple of the emails that were sent out today um, show that the river management engineer, Josh Carvahal, uh, was out there, and also the one of the environmental enforcement officers for the for DEC for the state. So the enforcement officer essentially said, um, he didn't notice anything other than what Josh, the river management engineer, had noticed. And Josh said there was no permit that was needed or violated there. There is a a there could have been a stream alteration permit needed there because there's some activity in a stream, a small stream there. Um, Josh did, um, suggest that there be a a Ford, a stream Ford, F O R D, installed there, and he he left some information about the best ways, the best practices for doing that. So we've got that. And now we've also got our stormwater ordinance. And because this is in the watershed as a whole, not that one hundred foot buff, one hundred and fifty feet buffer. Fifty, thank you, um. There are some some articles in our ordinance that may or may not apply. And, um, so in this instance, it would be either Article Four or and or seven. Get my notes here. Four, um, if there's some solid waste disposal, is illicit connections or legal discharges, discharges going on? Industrial or construction activity discharges? Or some management? Or I guess this actually could be mismanagement of construction waste and debris. Those are included in four, it might be applicable here. And in Section Seven is if there's some significant erosion from impervious surfaces that's being caused by the activities on this parcel.
So can you can you tell me, Eric, can you tell us what what did happen? I'm kind of lost a little bit. What? I I some of these things took place somewhere? Is that?
I think Andy knows the most about this.
A culvert was placed in the stream. Contacted Barbara, because I saw the the culvert in place. Found out that, uh, according to Josh Carvahal, a, when I spoke with him on the phone, a permit was required, and he said there was no permit issue. So we followed up on it. Um, you have a copy of the email where he says here, he's responded and says now that there's no permit required. And amazingly to me, the culvert, he says, is undersized, and he's making a recommendation that the owner replaces, but not a requirement. And I I just, I'm totally baffled by that. Because when you read the ordinance, the 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 state statute says you're not allowed to create an impoundment behind a behind a culvert. Well, obviously, if the culvert is undersized, you're gonna create an impoundment at given times, so.
Undersized, meaning it's too small.
It's small, yes.
Situation.
And if the if you had to come down, it's obviously it's undersized.
Mm-hmm.
It's undersized. He's just making a recommendation, but so he puts something in that was undersized, and if this hadn't occurred, it wouldn't get corrected. It wouldn't get fixed.
And I'm not real familiar with Fords. How those actually help a situation like this. Right, Bethany?
Well, I mean, a culvert is almost in and of itself a Ford. And in this situation, it's a a low slope streams down in the middle. The reason the reason the culvert was put in was to be allowed to drive vehicles across the stream. And of course, that's the reason that he's recommending a a heavier culvert, because what was used is that plastic, very thin plastic culvert that could easily be crushed by a by a heavy machine. In which case, then you wouldn't have a culvert anymore, you'd have a dam.
And and recommending not requiring.
Yeah.
So a stone Ford is just, like, say you have a driveway, and then there's a stream that comes back up. A stone Ford is just armoring underneath the stream. So if the water is flowing, you would drive through it.
Hmm.
Instead of having a culvert to have the water go through it, that you then build the road over. So with a stone Ford, if there was a flood, it could, you know, might wash out part of the driveway, but it could still go over without. And if you had a culvert there, just blow out the culvert. So that's kind of the difference.
So what would blow out the culvert?
Um, so say that little stream, there's a flood, and it got big, you know.
It would wash the culvert.
Would wash the culvert out, yeah.
So is this a a turn off the street, a town road into property?
It's in a, it's in the back of property. It's right near the, um, right near where the power line goes down behind hits the terrace. There's a stream that runs through my property and then meanders down through some other neighbor's properties.
Any other issues there, Andy, that that maybe the ordinance would come into play with? Any other issues at at the property?
I'm sorry, I couldn't really understand it from.
I think you've talked about them putting, bringing in a lot of fill.
Yeah.
Um, in in the past and in the recent past, too.
Well, that's that's being addressed differently. I mean, that's apparently A and R, um, only has jurisdiction on the amount of fill you bring into a property when you disturbed over an acre. And that hasn't been the case, so that's that's fine.
Is there? Okay, so given what we heard from the state, do you think there's reason for us to send our administrative officer out there to investigate whether anything else, anything in our ordinance is being affected or impacted? And a.
I I would like us to send Mr. Carvahal back a letter and ask why he would allow a subsized culvert to go into a stream and and remain there. Especially when when the person in question didn't get a permit to start with. So.
Well, I could explain that a little bit, just, um, well, in the email he's talking about, it's not jurisdictional, so that's why, um, if it was more than ten cubic yards,
Mm-hmm.
then he would have jurisdiction over it, but because it's smaller.
And we're talking about water, right?
Like whether the the state permit is triggered or not, so he can, that's why, I think that's why he's making a recommendation, because he doesn't have the authority to regulate that particular stream and that particular project, because it doesn't meet the the threshold that they have at the state.
Well.
For large enough.
You know, we're gonna follow along with that, and and I am personally just because I've been asking later on about this, about putting a different culvert in close by, I was told a stream alteration permit would be required. So.
The same stream?
Same stream.
Be required at the state level or at our level?
At state level.
Well, if it's required at the state level, what jurisdiction we have to make out of the generalization of this?
I don't know why we don't get jurisdiction over these things rather than state, and we have jurisdiction over the, we have jurisdiction over the rucks that are fed by these streams. But not the streams that are distributaries, so to speak. But that's, we've spent enough time on this, that's.
So is there any action that this?
Well, as I said, I would, I would like us to follow along as stormwater people and 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 really ascertain whether he absolutely does not have jurisdiction. Or does or does not to require a a stream alteration permit.
Are you talking about Josh?
Yes.
Okay.
But the environmental enforcement officer went by and says, at this time, I have nothing to add to Josh's findings. So he looked at it as well. That was in the second email from Patrick Locus, Locus?
Lopes.
Lopes, yeah.
I was able to swing by and refer the issue to Josh, but this time I had nothing to add to his findings. I'm not sure we're gonna get much further with the state on this.
We can't, we can't.
Um, so your suggestion, Andy? Is what again?
We can't, we can't. As I said, I would, I I you would like us to follow along as to why you would only do the recommendation, but if if as as Mary Beth says, if they really don't have jurisdiction on it, then it's just a moot point.
Well, if they don't have jurisdiction, why do we not have jurisdiction? Where does the jurisdiction?
It's not, it's not like an area, it's it's the size of the stream um, that they, they don't want to overregulate and, you know, put in, you know, you require all these culverts and all these things for 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 very small streams.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
That's why they don't have, they don't have regulatory authority.
Yeah.
Do we have any of them?
Not for yeah, not at this level and for this sort of thing.
Okay.
We've got the ordinance, and whether there's, you know, solid waste being disposed there, construction activity discharges.
And those don't apply, so then we don't have any reason to be a. And those don't apply, so then we don't have any reason to be a party to the.
Any erosion? That we know of? So I guess they don't know.
So my question then is, how is this information, the recommendation going to communicate? Property owner? To the property owner? They met with the property owners, met with, with those folks?
Yeah.
Okay.
They had to let them on the property.
And they made, they made the recommendation known to the. So we don't have anything else to do.
So I mean, I made the decision to start with the state and, and see if there were some, you know? Big things going on there that only they can tackle, that, you know, we still, we still wouldn't be able to tackle with our ordinance. Um, and, and they've got, you know, much more for enforcement power and all that. So. This is the result of that. And so the question is? Do we want to appeal it? And the other question is, is there anything here that applies to our ordinance?
So I think, I don't have a copy of the stormwater ordinance with me, but I think the two main things that we'd be looking at. Um. For, and the water fed, so not related to the regulated streams or just, um, solid waste? Like debris, organic material?
Yep.
Um, or? Sediment like from construction, right? So we're looking at erosion, sediment? And, um, organic materials?
Or chemical materials, I mean, if that was. Many commercial or industrial.
I don't think we should just table this for now. That's fine. I mean, we've looked at. What can and can't be done and pretty much. We just don't have much? Jurisdiction over any, any small streams.
Right.
And maybe we really don't need to have any, so.
I mean, I think the? Takeaway is that? The issue was flagged. Brought to our attention. Barbara contacted the state, the state did an investigation, made a recommendation and? We can feel comfortable that? We exercised our responsibility as.
I agree with that, yes, definitely.
Thanks. As a stormwater commission, yeah. Forgetting my role.
And, you know, if we? We could bring this up again anytime, certainly if we table it for now, but we wouldn't even need to do that. We could periodically? Review what's, what's going on there if we think it's an ongoing? Problem. Are, are the landowners pretty receptive? To, were they?
No knowledge. Well, since they really don't have to do anything now, I mean, the, that. The letter, the letter says it made a recommendation to, uh, to upgrade the, the culvert. Uh, however, it's just a recommendation. So.
Yeah.
I think we're just, we've done our diligence on that. I appreciate everyone's time on that.
Ready to go with that?
Yep.
Would you like a motion, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Motion to adjourn the Stormwater Commission at eight oh four.
Second.
Oh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Do you have me still with us?
Do you need a motion to reconvene?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to reconvene the Planning Commission at eight oh five?
Sick.
Chairman, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. A. Okay. Got a heavy night tonight.
Hmm, yeah.
Um, so down to old business. So I contacted VLCT. About? The select board? Uh, suggesting we look at our ordinances and then we address some of the issues that have brought up when we, when we asked for zoning to be reconsidered? That we, uh, use ordinances? To address some of those issues? Um, the, the league is not willing to come and, and just do a Q and A session with us. They would prefer that we put some questions together? And send them along and they'll answer them. They will give us, you know? That they have some templates for ordinances? That are used in, in other parts of the state? Um, that they can share with us and they can give us some legal advice? For pay as well as we move through this process.
I'd be charged for the service. You have an hourly rate, uh? We are available for questions and legal review for a reasonable hourly rate.
Yeah, if we need the legal review, we'd pay, we'd pay for that. I, I think anything about, you know, just? You know, this, this ordinance go too far or there are other examples of, of dealing with this kind of issue? Um, that's something they would do for our member, for us being members. So. The select board also asks us to look at all of the ordinances that we have. We've got about what, 15 or something like that? Um, so I think we should. My thinking is maybe do this in, in two parts. Um, perhaps tackle the issues we, we wanted to look at first? Like we were, construction activity? Um, you know, the helipads? Some of the building, um? Uh, ordinance or the, the building codes that we wanted to deal with? Those sorts of things, firearms? And then maybe go through the list of what we have and whether we need to update anything? Uh, of our ordinances. Might be a good chance to update our subdivision regulations. And they're a little bit confusing in places. Flood hazard maybe, we definitely can update those, make them a little more stringent. So does that sound like a pretty good plan? I've got the ideas we had the last time. Um. We're just throwing out ideas for new ordinances. The amount of fill without? Getting a permit? Um, the use of firearms? And shooting ranges, and then we, we talked a little bit about paramilitary training facilities.
We did? I don't remember that.
You might, it might have been a meeting you missed.
I think so. I just, I, that, that one, that one, I gotta tell you, when I read that, maybe I wasn't here. That blows me away. I mean? Don't we kind of have that in the? In the thing north end of town? And is that a military training? So where are we, why are we talking about? I don't understand talking about.
Well, we're just talking about possibility of a trapped ordinance. Really, we're not.
But I, but I mean, I can see a noise ordinance when it comes to.
Right.
But I, I don't, I don't see? Bigger language in that being useful.
Well, especially without zoning.
Right, right. I mean, we're, we're like, we're, we're fighting a battle that would be done by Act 250 anyway.
We're even more limited with what we do with ordinances because? There's more latitude given to zoning, you know, statewide. You can put a lot of stuff into zoning. But ordinances have to be pretty much prescribed? By statute? And a lot of things get tucked into noise ordinances or public nuisance ordinances? Um, because there's just not that many options and she's, in one of the emails, she laid out what are, and there's not that many. It's like a handful? Of, of, of ways you can, you can shoehorn an ordinance in? And, and that goes back to us, you know, being a Dillon Rule state where the state will have, the state tells us how far we can go. It doesn't work the other way around. If, and the state has to put it in statute or whatever. And so far for ordinances, it's not a whole lot. So we also talked about hot air balloons. Um.
Yeah, that was part of the, um. Helipad ordinance.
Informational building permits, generic building permits? And, and noise ordinances? I mean, for instance, our stormwater ordinance was put into? It was, it was put into the, the section where allows public nuisances. There's a lot of things that can fit in there. So I guess? We need to get back to, to Abby at Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I, I don't want to leave her? Hanging there too long without us getting back to her and thinking that we've, we've lost interest. So? I think we should put together a list of questions for her, like she suggests. And that's the list we started out with for, for new ordinances.
She gave us some feedback on that list, did she not?
Yeah, I gave her a abbreviated list. I didn't give her this whole one. It's my, bombard her too much at the beginning. I don't think I put anything in there about building permits. And then, then it dawned, I mean, one of the reasons why it's so hard to do this helipad and airstrip ordinance? Is because? We can't do much. We probably can only do noise, you know, violations on that.
No, we can't. And helipads? It's specific that, that you, you can't regulate. Because of noise.
Yeah.
Why even, why even have to think, you know?
That explains why we've been beating our heads against the wall on this one and why there's so few examples out there. Um. I mean, we could, it could possibly fall under a public nuisance? I don't know. So? We've? Done a lot tonight. Do you want to? Spend some time? Do you need this list of what, what I just read? Do you want me to send this out to you? And then? Give you like a week or so to come back with some questions? For VLCT?
Yeah.
Okay. And as you notice, most of them, most of the ordinances fall under section 2291? Like our stormwater and, and then most of the things we asked her about? The nuisance firearm discharges and? Um, so she's familiar with it.
So when I printed this, I guess I was having trouble. She references? The helipads. Please see the attached letter from the State Transportation Board.
Which is what we got and what started us down that path.
Okay. Wasn't in the. But I just printed out, or was it?
Oh.
And she referenced it, I just couldn't see it.
I don't know if I, I think I didn't include it because we've already looked at it. We already had? Don's car over here to talk about it. Is that the only thing you noticed?
Yeah, I just.
Okay, so I'll put the.
I didn't know if it was different than what we got already.
Okay, so we'll proceed on that. I'll just send you out that list and? Give you a deadline. A.
So Barbara, are, are you looking? To gather this before our next meeting? Or are you looking to tell Abby that we'll have questions for at our next meeting? What do you think, what do you think?
I was hoping that we could come up with our questions and get them answered before the next meeting. And I'm just thinking, you know, maybe this fall we, we work on, this is our project. And then the winter, we look at the, the ordinances that are in place. We break into small groups or? You know, you know, break out to according to interests that people have.
I will set that up next time, maybe?
Yeah. Okay. Um. Bill, anything new on McKinley Avenue? Boundary line adjustments up there? We're assuming they're doing the surveys?
That's what I would assume, yes. I'll, I'll, I'll try to already get all, I, I, I can.
Yeah, well.
You can get back when we're ready and show it, so.
Yeah. And, okay, um? Alco, you've got some correspondence from the solar company down on Coal River Road?
They put, they're putting, uh, one of the, one of the? Projects online. They're still building some of the.
Well, I'm ready to go? Not the one you can see from the road, I guess.
No, it's one of the, I think it was the one? 1.2 kilo lot one? Remember, right, it's?
You can see it if you.
Yeah.
But it's, it is way down.
It notified us that it's beginning operation.
We've never noticed that if it wasn't a construction machinery right now up near the, up near the road.
Yeah, that one is really hidden way down.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the best place is to go in.
Windcrest Road, you can see it.
Yes, Windcrest Road. Okay, um? Other announcements? Uh, there is a VLCT town fair coming up. Um, there's a virtual option, there's a hybrid option, there's an in-person option. Um, the topic is building, building infrastructure for today and tomorrow? Broadband? The comprehensive energy plan that's coming up? And federal infrastructure legislation, what you need to know? So those are the, the three topics.
I, I have some up for the virtual option, which we can make available. So if anybody wants? Part of it, just come here.
And, and?
We're paid for it, so.
Yep, and the town can pay for it. So, so? The virtual, they, they list like? Five, four days?
Yeah, it's all week, one day for Friday.
Wow, different sessions?
Different topics. There's one day on ARPA, one day on infrastructure, one day on? Information technology, just a different thing, everything. So there's, you go to their website, you have to go to VLCT's website, there's a whole page just for town fair? And all schedules there, so it's, it's all, it's all there.
So that's October 4th through 8th for the virtual sessions? Um, you can come and go.
Yeah.
And then, uh, September 29th is the in-person event? And you can also do that virtually? But that's the only in-person?
Yeah.
Event, the?
September 29th?
Yeah.
Where's that at?
Okay.
So it's all day for those four?
They go like, I think like eight to three or nine to three. There, there's two or three seminars or three or four seminars every day.
And, um, the pocket park, the survey is underway? And they'll, we'll have some more meetings as part of this grant, this planning grant, design grant? We'll have some more meetings with GMP once that survey's done? And maybe get some sort of agreement between? The company and the town for easements or, or whatever? Or they come up with on that? Um, we've done stakeholders for recreational? Ideas and they came up with a lot and the map is full of ideas. Um, tomorrow I'm having a meeting, the first meeting with historical stakeholders? And this in group, this includes local historians, um, the state historic preservation? Uh, includes the? The, 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 the groups that are really honed in on certain periods of history, like the Crown Point Road? Uh, Association? Um, and the Daughters of American Revolution? We've got Proctor Marble? Going to be represented and GMP's going to be there? Uh, and a couple of indigenous groups? Native American groups? And one of them I have, one of them is the Abenaki, the other is a Mohican? Affiliated group? That goes all the way down to like Pennsylvania? And? Up through Vermont and New Hampshire a little bit? Uh, they are particularly concerned about land disturbance issues? Because that area was used, you know, thousands of years? Um, by Native Americans for fishing and camping. It was a seasonal. But I think? For most projects, they're concerned about land disturbance, so they're concerned about some extra parking lots that we have? uh, on the drawing board right now and even the boat launch, the kayak boat launch. So that's going to be interesting looking with these groups. But, so, so the meeting tomorrow is make sure we've got, we've got all of the history. Um, we've got a low. Yeah, tomorrow afternoon. Yeah, uh, it's, it's during working hours because most of these people are representing. Most of them.
I missed, I missed that something. I didn't realize that.
This is, this is a stakeholder. This is, this is like almost by invitation only. There are some neighbors that have been invited as well.
You're talking about up here?
Yeah. And, uh, we'll have some public meetings too to look at what the stakeholders come up with. And then the public will have the final say. So, you know, we want to make sure we get all of the history periods. There's a lot of them. Um, and the locations, there's a lot of locations in this general area with historical connections. Make sure we've got those and then figure out how we're going to feature those. Is it just going to be a kiosk? Is it going to be signs? Is it going to be a QR code or something? Um, online, much more elaborate, much more extensive, like a virtual, a virtual walking tour. So wish us luck. Go ahead and get into all that stuff tomorrow.
So who's attending?
I just told you the list.
No, I mean, besides yourself. I mean, when you said wish us luck, I was just wondering who the us was.
The town, the town, yeah, so.
Is the left board's the, the one?
Uh, Mary Ashcroft will be there and I guess the we is also, I mean, it's also part, is the regional planning commission since
Okay.
we're administering this grant, this planning grant.
Okay. I just was trying to figure out who, who.
I, I asked initially if anyone, uh, I spent a few months, but I asked if anyone from the planning commission wanted to be part of any of these stakeholder groups. So, but there will be another chance.
Just, just curious.
And I'll run, oh, when, when I get this wrapped up, I'll certainly run all this by the, by you folks.
Sure.
Their ideas that came up with. Any other announcements?
I have, I know we're really late, but I just wanted to give a quick update on the, uh, the trail meeting that we discussed over email, but came up in between meetings. Um, so a group of people met, um, some people that are working on the Velemon Trail, which is mountain bike and multi-use trail from Rochester down through Tittenden to, um, gonna be ending in Mendon on Old Turnpike Road. And there's a group in Mendon that's, um, working on trying to put in a trail from Old Turnpike Road. Um, going all the way to Pine Hill Park eventually. So we talked about possibilities of putting it in Rutland Town. So it would either be north of Route 4 or south of Route 4. They talked about north of Route 4 ideally could go through Northwood Park and, um, you know, then the town could be part of that. Um, but right now it's like very early idea phase. Just kind of initial meeting to, for different groups to meet. Um, so I'll let you know, there could be another meeting later in the fall or the winter as, but this is kind of initial meetings that all the groups involved um, can just see what is going on basically, you know?
Both of these are pretty new ideas?
So we, so we became involved, so Mike Crowe is managing the VoRec grant, right? For the specifically Northwood Park. But we didn't know what particular plans other people were working on. And we're like, well, if we're doing mountain bike trails in the park, it would make sense to connect with other people that are working on similar projects. Um, so, um, so we met with this group, you know, there's someone from Pine Hill Park there too, and just talked about different possibilities.
Rock, was that?
Yeah.
Called himself as a rock, is it?
So, so it's a group, uh, the Velemon Group is also, that's a one project that is part of the Ridgeline Outdoor Collective, which is the ROC or RAC, that used to be called RASTA, but they just recently changed their name. It used to be like the Rin, Rochester area trail lines, yeah. But now they're kind of expanding out and one of the people involved with the Velemon Trail is based in Polley and the Slate Valley Trails. Um, so it's the, and the Vermont Mountain Bike Association had a, their president was at the meeting and so, um, just kind of an initial, what everyone's thinking about possibilities into the future. But ideally at some point, there would be a trail that goes from Killington to Old Turnpike and then Old Turnpike up to Rochester and Old Turnpike over to Pine Hill Park. Which obviously would be through Rutland Town somewhere.
So if that went through, uh, Northwood Park?
Right.
Would it come down Post Road?
Um.
Or is there some other?
Don't know, but it could. I mean, so part of this is that there's multiple landowners. We talked about focusing on national forest land because that's just one landowner to, to work with. Um, but there would be other parcels in between. We talked about, um, talking to the city about the watershed area going through there, like kind of because if we could avoid crossing Route 4 with all of the issues of that, that would be best. So if we stay north of Route 4.
You still have to cross Route 7.
Do you have to cross Route 7? And someone brought up that Rutland Town is doing this study in that area about sidewalks and maybe it could, um, that could be involved somehow. So maybe it could use the sidewalks as a trail.
Easiest way would be to cross at McKinley. And to go up to, um, uh, North Grove Street and then down to Crescent and over to the park.
But they don't want to be on the street if they don't have to.
I, I, I understand. I'm just giving a conceptual idea about the way it would be the least, I think.
Right. Well, and they.
Challenging. There's, there's one crossing point there. That's what I was pointing out.
The consensus was kind of that, um, we'd get people to, to Route 7 and the sidewalk there. And then from there, they would go, have to go through the city. You know, to the park like via like Georgetti, but we also talked about, wouldn't it be great to go along McKinley and like, you know.
Silverlands there.
Yeah, and like over to Grove Street and.
It's an, I, I was also thinking from an aesthetics point of view, that, that route is more attractive than going along Route 7 down to.
Right, I totally, I completely agree. Well, and there could be different options too, but just to have like a mean trail, there could be a south of Route 4 trail. It could be, so there's basically a ton of possibilities. But this was just kind of starting a discussion and just so that we all know that other people are thinking about it and um, a couple of the other groups have also applied for the VoRec grants. And if you work together, you, um, the possibility of your application, you get a lot more points. So that was another.
If, if we, if we get the VoRec, we grant, we could tailor, we could keep tweaking it so that it would include some of this?
Yes. So what we submitted before was only an initial letter of intent.
Right.
So that was what we submitted back in August. Um, they confirmed receipt of our letter of intent and then September 28th is their date for getting back to everybody and inviting them to apply. So then there's going to be, instead of just this little letter, basically these are our ideas. It's going to be a full application with, that's going to be very involved and yeah, we'll definitely need help.
Yeah, should we have Mike and the group and your, that group, including yourself, come before us?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, and we'll have, I think the, the final application is due the end of November. So we'll have some time, but still not a lot of time. But they'll let it, we'll know by the end of September whether we're invited to apply for the full grant or not.
And we don't know how much detail is required at the final.
Right, they'll provide instructions and.
What's the total mileage from Rochester to Pine Hill?
I don't know. Not sure, but that.
How many private properties does it go through?
Well, that was the other question, but I was just curious.
That project is going to happen, like from Old Turnpike to Rochester, parts of the trail already built. They're working on it now. It's shovel ready. They're, you know, they're working on it, but it is in progress and it will happen.
It's on, uh, state line, is that right?
Yeah, and on national forest land. Yep, so it's a little easier to.
To get the permissions.
National forest, right.
National forest.
So already almost all snowmobile trail. Most points on national.
Right, yeah, it is an old trail there already that I think they're.
Well, I mean, then it's a complimentary distribution. You let the bikers, bikers use it in good weather and the snowmobile is in the wintertime.
Would be nice.
Yeah.
Well, so I'll keep you guys updated when I find out in a couple of weeks.
Great, great. Thank you. And I, Sherman, you're somewhat involved too?
No, not yet. Not really.
Okay.
I know a little about it, but I'm not, not involved.
Okay.
Well, and I'll let, if we have another group with the trail meeting, not really related to the VoRec, but I'll let you guys know the next meeting of that, you know, we have that too, so anyone can participate.
Great. Okay, anything else to come before the group? Krista, did you think of anything else?
Is it okay to ask a question?
Oh, sure. We haven't, we haven't, you know, enacted these snow rolls yet, so.
This is really just one question. I just want to be clear, Bill, um, if we apply for one subdivision, say we break this 170 acres into five big lots. That's considered one application for one subdivision?
I, I don't, I don't know. If, if it's one parcel and you're, you know, if we were doing it like with one, one map and say, here's the new lines in the map. Is that, if we want it in the paper, you know, I weren't alive, we're not going to do five separate ones. We're going to do one subdivision to create these five lots.
I believe if you take, I believe if you take one parcel, you can create up to 10 more, like 10 total.
You, you mean like for the Act 250 rules or for our, our purposes?
For our purposes, we can do it as many times as you like.
We can. It's just the difference between minor and major subdivision.
I think for our purposes, it'd be a single application. How this, how Act 250 views it is not up to us.
Right.
That's why she has to ask them.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
But it makes sense that it would be one subdivision, you know, one kind of theme, right, going in, in a certain area.
You're going to do one new MYLR, you're going to do one, one new survey map for the entire thing. You're not going to do five for each, one for each.
That's why it was confusing to me because if you're, if you're filing one, uh, one MYLR with one piece of property that is then broken down into 15 parcels. That's one application for a subdivision. You just divide it into 15 parcels. So the, the question there is do those 15 parcels constitute 15 subdivisions under Act 250? And we don't know the answer.
Yeah, that's right.
I can somehow explain this to people tomorrow, so.
I would, I would avoid that question because you don't know what the answer is until you've talked with Act 250. So, but you could say that
we don't know.
What we know is that you'd be filing one subdivision application with us.
Through the town.
Through the town for whatever you wanted to put on that, but you would need clarification from Act 250 about whether they constitute y, y, unit accumulated subdivisions or whether it would all be considered one act, one event. And we can't answer that question.
Hopefully we're of some help too. But come back anytime.
If you listen to me long enough, you'd be very confused. I can tell you that because I get confused myself.
Anything else? Anyone want to make the motion to adjourn for three weeks?
We did minutes.
Oh, the minutes, the minutes. We don't have to do.
Go ahead, Mary Beth, make that motion.
Shouldn't we wait for Norm?
Can we do this without Norman here?
Wait, what's the mission? I moved to, um.
Prove the minutes.
Oh, prove the minutes, okay.
Second. All right, Sherman, you got it.
Okay. Cue Norm.
All right, I have a revision. Not grammatical nature. Um, so under old business life board decision on a town conservation commission and zoning. Uh, number one. I would like to change, so it says, the board was not in favor of the commission working on zoning or establishing a conservation commission. Um, at that meeting that we'd gone to, they didn't make a decision. They tabled it for another time because one of the members wasn't present. And so I just wanted to reword that because they, I, I think they did vote on zoning, right?
They took a straw vote on zoning. And the, the conservation commission was sort of a consensus type thing. And there were, people spoke against it and, and one, Mary Ashcroft spoke for it.
But then at the end, when, so, and I rewatched the video. Um, at the end, Don said, um, so what, what's the timeline? Do we need to make a decision now? And Mary said, no, we don't. Um, I forgot, I think Joe wasn't present. She said, um, so because of that and because we have plenty of time before March, should we table the discussion? And that's where they left it. So there is no vote.
Yeah, I think the most we can do here is say at this time. Uh, they are not in favor of the commission working on, because in, in two subsequent meetings, this has come up through various, either select board members and members of the public. And it's just reinforced that there, there's not a support, enough support there for a commission.
I think the statement is right. I mean, the board was not in favor. I mean, they, they, as a board, they weren't in favor. It was well talked about when I heard it. So I think, I don't see anything wrong with that sentence right there.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't know. I get a different impression from that. And they didn't actually make a decision, so I think to say was not in favor of, I think is misleading or not entirely accurate. I would, so I would reword it to say the board was, I don't know, let's see.
Did they actually say that they didn't want us to work on zoning?
Not at that meeting, but I haven't been in.
Yes, they took a straw vote on that.
Okay, so, so that's, that's pretty clear. The board was not in favor of the planning commission working on zone. Why don't we separate it into two sentences? That way I can make it clear because I, I too was just, I was a little curious about the way that the two things will lump together without it being separated, but um, it seemed ambiguous to me. That's just in reading it. I wasn't going to object to it, but.
Well, so let's say, let's just add a period after zoning. And then the board did not make a decision either way.
But didn't you say they tabled it? Did, did you say that Mary said table?
They didn't officially table it.
They didn't, okay.
I forgot exactly.
They said we'd take it up at another time or something to that effect.
Okay.
They, they may take it up.
Maybe no decision was made on establishing a conservation.
That's, that's pretty accurate.
No decision, okay. Duke.
Anything else?
I had, I had a check mark, Barb. I was, I was.
Whoa, nice. Red check mark.
Red check mark. Could have been green, but.
Okay. So, um, who made the motion?
That was Mary Beth.
Well, then your motion to accept your own change.
Oh, do I, oh, I, I moved to accept the minutes as amended?
As amended, yes, Mary Beth.
And I'll second, second, okay. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.